I call to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Because of technical difficulties, I will be calling the roll tonight. Thank you. I noticed that Barb Dorf and Craig Stevens are both present and voting. Alder Galvin?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Johnson?
Here.
I did not hear.
Alder Johnson's here.
Thank you. Alder Weary?
Here.
Thank you. Please mute something. Alder Burnett?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Vanderleest?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Stoyer?
I am here.
Alder Stoyer's here.
Thank you. Alder Scannell?
Present.
Thank you. Alder Corpus Dax?
Here.
Thank you. I have Alder LaFave and Alder Gerlock?
Here.
Say it loud.
Yes, thank you. And just give me a moment. Okay. Give me one more moment. I think I'm going to be saying that a lot tonight.
No problem.
Yeah, it's very slow. I'm so sorry.
You might want to just use Word or something.
Word?
Well, I just mean to take notes rather than if you're trying to work in civic clerk.
Yeah, it's the, it's setting the video, which would mean a lot of work on the backend. So let's see how this does. Okay, mayor, we are on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Great. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation led by Alder Craig Stevens.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, mayor, and now we're on to the invocation.
We're all set. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, thank you, mayor. The past year and a half has been trying on so many different levels, everyone trying to make the best possible decisions to help protect themselves and survive during this pandemic. But there are many people that lost the battle to survive. Many of our city residents, including members in this chamber, had to deal with the loss of a family member or friend. As of recent, I would like to say thank you to a friend and a colleague for offering to help me with this invocation, because I am currently dealing with a death within my own family. As I read the following from John Mark Green, I ask that you please take a moment to reflect on a memory of a family member or friend you have lost. How do we go on? How do we go on after the unthinkable happens? How can we carry the burden of knowing the world can be cruel and dangerous, the future so unpredictable? How do we grieve with empty arms and a head filled with echoing memories? We are stronger than we know, and this is how we show it, holding each other, giving comfort in the midst of pain, loving more fiercely through our actions and the things we say, making the world just a little bit better every single day, never taking life for granted, knowing that it can be snatched away. This world may bring deep darkness, but we are the barrier of light. We'll join our flames together and shine in the blackest of nights. Thank you for taking a moment to reflect on your memory, and please remember, all of us are the light to bring you out of the deep darkness. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Very sorry for your loss, and thanks for sharing those words with us.
Thank you, mayor, and now we're on to approval of the minute. Yes?
Second.
Thank you, just messing with the camera here.
And I did not hear that at all.
No, sorry, just messing with the camera here.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so we had a motion by Alder Scannell to approve the minutes from our last meeting, meeting of September 7th, 2021. Was there a second?
I seconded.
Seconded by Alder Dorf. Any changes there? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. On to approval of the agenda.
So, I take a motion move, but I want to make a change.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to make a change to the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to take Protection and Policy, number seven, move to the top, or, I don't know if there's anybody here for that. Well, just in case they are.
Okay, so Alder Scannell makes a motion to take up Protection and Policy as the first committee. Is that sufficient?
You know, given the technical difficulties, I hope those who are here for this item will understand that it's going to be coming again to Protection and Policy, let's just...
Just leave it where it is?
Leave it where it is, and if we could just let people know we have technical difficulties, and so we're not going to take up this item tonight, so that they don't stick around if they don't want to.
Sure. Absolutely. Okay, well, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any other changes suggested? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda has been adopted, or approved, rather. On to report by the mayor. Just a couple of quick notes, nothing related to the agenda this evening, but we did make live a community survey for our residents to fill out, to kind of inform us on what they'd like to see out of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that have been allocated to the city of Green Bay, so just wanted to flag that for folks, it should be on social media, and has been, I think, covered by some of our local media as well, so certainly directing all kinds of, you know, local stakeholders and residents to that, that survey, to offer their input to us. It's a very unique opportunity that we have in front of us in the form of $23.7 million, thanks to the federal government, so certainly want as much input as possible into that decision-making process. Also, within the next few weeks, we will be having town halls that are focused both on the city's budget and that ARPA allocation and our spending plan as it relates to it, so certainly encouraging people to keep an eye out for those town halls. We'll have one on the east side, one on the west side, but both will be available virtually, so people can stay tuned for that as well, should be occurring at the end of October. Yes, Alder Scannell?
Is all that information on the city website or the city Facebook page?
The survey is live on the city's website and should be out on social media. We don't have the dates designated yet for the town halls, but those should be out there very shortly.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for the question. And then also just wanted to touch on redistricting. This is something that the county board, I believe, will be entertaining tomorrow night. It's a very, very tight timeline because of the COVID-related delay in the census numbers that have come to us, so just wanted to flag that for council here and also for the public. We have to approve our new districts by October 18th, and so, yeah, so we're going to have to schedule, in all likelihood, a special meeting in between the already scheduled meetings in October, so envisioning an October 5th meeting, which, as I said, is already scheduled, but then probably an October 12th meeting to approve those maps in order to get it in before that deadline that's imposed by the state. So again, there's going to be that discussion at county board, I believe, tomorrow night. Encourage people to tune in and offer their comments, but obviously a big deal, and so once in a 10-year opportunity to change these maps at the local, state, and federal level, so please tune in and offer your feedback to us, once we have those maps approved by the county. Question from Alder Dorf.
Do you have to wait for the county to be done before we can look at it? Is that why we're waiting?
Yes, I mean, we don't have to wait, you know, to look at the maps, right, or to offer input. IT Director Heronick has had some conversations with county staff, just the, you know, logistics of the map making from the city's point of view. Our clerk Jeffries has also been attending some of those discussions, and I believe has interacted with some of the planning staff at the county level to offer their input. Obviously, we have a couple of county board members who serve on the city council as well, so if you have any brief thoughts, Alder Vanderleest, to chime in with, feel free.
They're going to have a viewing at 5 o'clock tomorrow night, and then our meeting is at 5:30 tomorrow.
Okay. Very good, and that's still at the RESH?
Yes, it is.
At the RESH Expo Hall, for those that are interested in attending in person.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alder LaFave.
The maps are available right now on the Brown County website, so you can view them. And I went to the Brown County office, and they printed off the four new ones, and from what I can see, they're much better, much better. So I think you'll be, I think, pleased with some of the new revisions on the maps.
Very good. Thanks for that, Alder LaFave. All right, and with that, that concludes my report. Any announcements from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Alder Burnett and then Alder LaFave.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to alert the council that internet is working now, so I was able to pull up the city website to look at the agenda, and also want to welcome Chief Davis to the city of Green Bay. I was not able to attend your inauguration, but I just want to welcome you warmly from the city council, and sorry I couldn't attend your event, but I look forward to working with you, and I'm sure you'll do a great job for the citizens of Green Bay. Thank you.
Absolutely, well said. Thanks for being here tonight, chief. Thanks for being here tonight.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to be here.
And I'm looking forward to working with all of you as well, so thanks for having me.
Absolutely. Any other announcements from our council? Alder Johnson?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, sorry, Alder LaFave and then Alder Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to mention flu shots are out. I got my flu shot today, I don't know if you can see my sticker here, got my flu shot. Stew's has them, and I believe if you check some of the other places, they're starting with the flu shots. So it's important that we go out and get our flu shot, is another thing that we can do to help not just ourselves, but with the COVID, it helps too. I wanted to mention that I am going to bring up a motion right after number K, when the reports for all the committees come up, and this motion is, I can make a motion without objections to approve L1 to R1 committee reports. There is no second, I just have to ask you three times if there are no objections. If there are not, then all the committee reports are approved, and then Alders can pull any item that they want, and then you, mayor, will take those in order, the pulled items. We do this now in the county, and it helps us speed up the meeting.
Right.
This is through Robert's Rule of Orders.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that suggestion. I would want our law department, city attorney, to kind of wade through that a little bit before we adopt that as a common practice, but certainly appreciate that suggestion, and city attorney Chavez, if you have any comments on that, would welcome them.
We can definitely review that. The concern is that we have to provide, so we're basically treating the entire agenda as a consent agenda at that point, and so we have to be careful about what is being placed on that. Right now, we're kind of creating these mini consent agendas, and so when we're treating the entire agenda as a consent agenda, we're kind of running, we're really toeing the line on what's legally or acceptable, and so I'll take a look at that to see if there's anything that we can do with that, but really, when you do consent agendas, it's supposed to be limited to items that are routine in nature and that are, you know, standard procedure or debate, because then you're giving the public adequate opportunity to know what's supposed to be, what's going to be approved right away versus what is potentially up for discussion.
The county does do it, so I would assume it is, it's legal to do it. It's also in the Robert's Rule of Order. That's what we were told.
I will definitely look into that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Alder, thanks, attorney. Alder Johnson and then Alder Vanderleest.
Thank you, mayor. Of course, there's been a lot of different types of grants and economic incentives that have come through from the federal government, from state government, obviously, local government. There's one in particular, I just wanted to point out, though, that was funded through ARPA, through the state of Wisconsin, and that's the bounce-back grant. For those who are not familiar, this provides a $10,000 grant to businesses that are opening in vacant storefronts. Now, there are some, you know, exclusions, restrictions that apply. The reason I want to pull this one out in particular and call it out is because a lot of times a business in its first couple of years is when it's, you know, most precarious, and this $10,000 grant can go a long ways in terms of helping a small business cover some of those rent expenses upfront, or maybe some build-out costs. So if any of us know of a small business, or, you know, someone who's maybe operating out of their home, is maybe contemplating starting a business, there's never been a better time. You know, I've written a couple of, probably about a half a dozen, letters of support as I worked for a certified economic development organization that can do that, where we review the leases and just verify everything's kosher, but please keep that in mind if you are working with folks that are interested in starting a business, because I think that's going to be one of the ways that we really build back our economy, is encouraging entrepreneurism. Thank you, mayor.
Absolutely, well said. Thanks, Alder. Alder Vanderleest?
Thank you, mayor. I'm really not in favor of LaFave's, in other words, Mr. LaFave's changing our agenda, we've been doing it. I think there's a lot more things on city council that need a lot more attention, and I don't just like to swipe through the whole works, and so I'm not in favor of changing how we've been handling our agendas, and I think we've done a very good job, and we, you know, vet a lot of the material that we're, you know, trying to, the public's concerned about, and I think that we'll miss the, you know, a lot of good discussions if we're going to just take it as a, you know, one through nine, and all, you know, going right through everything.
Right.
I think it's not for me, I wouldn't support it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, your honor. This is a thank you to the Green Bay Fire Department. A week ago, Sunday, my wife and I were out biking on East River Trail, and she had a pretty bad accident, which required the response of Engine 8, and then also the Eagle Rescue Squad. She was unconscious for quite a while, and had to be transported to the hospital. Everything's going real well, she's recovering, but I sent a note to the chief to thank him and the crew, but since, and over the last 40 years, my family has made personal use of Green Bay Fire Rescue for my father, father-in-law, two of my daughters, and my wife on another occasion, and I can tell you, when your whole world is falling apart, and you hear those sirens coming, and you know that these people are dedicated to trying to make your tragedy turn out okay, it's, it's just, we're blessed to have them, and for all the good work they do, and I just want to thank them. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Obviously, sending a lot of warm thoughts to you and your family and your wife, so thanks for sharing those comments. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, your honor. I actually like to piggyback on what Alder Galvin said. I had a recent injury myself. Fire department got out to my house within seven minutes, took care of me, asked all the right questions, really couldn't have done it without them, literally, so I'm thanking them as well, so that's it.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to the appointments, just have one new appointment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the new appointment by Alder Scannell, that was seconded by Alder Gerlock. Any discussion? None, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that appointment has been confirmed. On to the public hearing, and then I need to make a comment here about the hearing, and then a couple of our items under ordinances, second reading for adoption. So if anyone's here for the public hearing, by all means, please speak up, but we had a little bit of a snafu here and failed to provide the full 30-day notice required under statute for a public hearing notice related to Comprehensive Plan Amendment. A new public hearing notice for the Tuesday, November 2nd, common council meeting will be posted, so as a result, consideration of zoning ordinance 10-21 will also be held over, that's in addition to miscellaneous ordinance 03-21, and they will be considered on November 2nd at our common council meeting. So any questions there for staff? Director Steck Schulte can certainly entertain, but just wanted to make that note there, and then we will move into ordinances, second reading for adoption, again noting that items K1 and K4 need to be held over.
Motion to suspend the rules except for items K1.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up items 2, 3, and 5 with one roll call vote, that was seconded by Alder Weary. Any discussion on those ordinances?
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, can you please repeat that, and can you also go a little more slowly?
You bet. And I believe civic clerk might be back up, I don't know if it is...
It is.
...on your end.
Thank you, mayor, it is still not functioning in the way that I need it for me.
Got it.
So if you would just repeat that and go more slowly.
Yeah, absolutely. So we had a motion to suspend the rules and take up items 2, 3, and 5 with one roll call vote, and that was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Weary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are we able to use the board as of yet?
It is very, very slow.
Okay.
So I think why not try to use the board? I don't know how long it's going to take for that to come up.
Okay, we will give it a shot. I'm sorry, we need, no, nevermind.
Yes, just give me a moment. Thank you.
Nothing's coming up on mine.
Yeah, actually, unfortunately, it just, so there are a few Alders who had voted, and I saw the votes, and then the votes went away.
Okay, so maybe we could just handle it verbally?
So, yeah, I will call the roll. Alder Dorf?
Yes.
Alder Galvin?
Yes.
Alder Johnson?
Yes.
Alder Weary?
Aye.
Alder Stevens?
Yes.
I didn't hear.
Stevens votes yes.
Alder Burnett?
Yes.
Alder Vanderleest?
Yes.
Alder Stoyer?
Yes.
Alder Scannell?
Aye.
Thank you, Alder Scannell. Alder Corpus Dax?
Aye.
Thank you. And then Alder LaFave?
Aye.
Alder Gerlock?
Yes.
Alder Gerlock votes yes.
Thank you. That motion passes, that adoption passes 12-0.
Okay.
So, Steve?
Yes, Alder LaFave.
I'm in civic clerk now.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so that was on items K1, or K2, 3, and 5.
2, 5, yes.
On K1 and 4, entertain a motion to...
Motion to hold. Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer, to hold items K1 and K4 until our November 2nd common council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and those items are being held. On to the report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. Any items here to be handled separately? Item 1. Any others? All right, hearing others, item 1 will be handled separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item 1.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve, item 1, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin, item was pulled by Alder Stoyer, you have the floor.
Thank you, your honor. I spoke with Director Steck Schulte today, and I would just like him to kind of describe this item, if he would, and he mentioned he wouldn't mind doing that, so that's all.
Director?
Yep. Thank you, Alder Stoyer, thank you, mayor. This essentially, obviously, the TuneIn Properties Deal Agreement was just in front of this body here not too long ago. At that time, they were essentially proceeding with the project excluding the two buildings that were previously constructed by the developers, by the developer TMD Properties at that time. As the, after, essentially shortly after this was approved, as they were continuing in negotiations and discussion, they basically had come to an agreement to now include those two buildings as part of the overall acquisition. In addition, the developer will be making some improvements to those buildings as well, but there is no additional TIF assistance requested as part of that acquisition, but it does delay the project out an additional year, essentially, to allow them to generate the increment requested for the project. So a little bit larger project, no additional TIF funding, but delaying it one year to accommodate the developer, to accommodate that additional acquisition. And may I will answer any other questions if anyone has it?
I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, director, thank you, Alder. Any other comments on that? Alder Brunet, go ahead.
I apologize, mayor, I thought that Alder Stoyer had pulled item 1. I don't necessarily want to pull that for discussion, I just want Clerk Jeffries to record me as a no vote.
I'm sorry, for which?
Item 1. Oh, I'm sorry, item 2.
Item 2?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk Jeffries, do you have that?
Yes, video again, so yes, I will report that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on item 1? Alder Weary?
I apologize, I also thought number 2 was pulled, so I just wanted to be recorded as a no on that as well.
Okay. Alder Weary, also a no on item 2. Any other comments on item 1? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Report of the Improvement in Services Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock, and that is to approve the report of the Improvement in Services Committee from September 15th, 2021. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Protection and Policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately?
Number 7.
This item is to be referred to staff currently?
It's being referred to staff.
Okay, any others? Item 7 will be handled separately, hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of item 7. His wishes?
What to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf.
Or refer it to staff?
Yep, motion to, has been made to refer to staff, made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Item was pulled by Alder Vanderleest.
I guess if we're going to return it to staff, that's kind of what, you know, if we're going to vote on it, I said yes, that'd be great, return it to staff, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, item has been referred to staff. Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. Items here to be handled separately.
Item 3.
Item 3 will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing no others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Aye!
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item three. Motion, motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. Item was pulled by Alder Brunette.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, question for staff, who would have some insight on this contract? Would that be the police department or purchasing manager? Yes, thank you, Commander Work. Uh, I guess the question is, I remember my first time on the council, it was a bit controversial because the contract had been pulled or, you know, removed from the Humane Society and put at Packerland Veterinary, and I believe. Correct. And there were a number of concerns and I hadn't really, I, I left the council for a while and now I'm back, and so I guess my, my question is to you are, are there any concerns, any issues that you see with the Humane Society that, over the course of the three-year contract would cause us to pause a little bit? No, um, when we negotiated this contract and we met with the Humane Society, um, I thought they were fair. Um, the scenario that you described when it went to Packerland Vet, um, I believe, in my professional opinion, that the contract, um, was lower than what it should have been at the time. Um, and when we met with the Humane Society, and our goal was to get on an annual cycle consistent with the city budget, which they were willing to do. Um, and with the cost and inflation and going back on what history of what that lower contract was, we felt that a hundred thousand dollars each year with a three percent kicker, uh, with inflation each year was fair, um, and, uh, for both sides, uh, given the services, the amount of animals that we bring out there. So I have no hesitation with that contract whatsoever. Uh, Commander Work, there are no issues worth noting between the humane officer and the Humane Society, any bad situations that council should be aware of? Well, I think, nothing to the raised to the level of council. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm in favor of this, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the items have, has been approved. Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlock. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number two.
Number two. Any others? Item two will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item two. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Mr. Mayor?
Seconded by Alder Dorf. Yes, Alder LaFave?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't get, I, I couldn't unmute myself in time. Um, I want to know number four. Unfortunately, I did not attend the park board meeting and I apologize for, I want to know, what are they talking about changing, the notification?
Okay, um, we can just go to Director, Assistant Director James Anderson, I believe is on the, oh, no, no, Director Ditchite is here. Director, go ahead.
Yes, so this was it, yeah, so we are reviewing the policy that was put in place in two thousand nineteen, and we'd like to get some clarification as far as when the public is gonna be notified, uh, in relation to new construction projects in the park. So it's a little clearer definition than what is currently listed in the existing policy.
Okay, I'll try to watch for it when it comes up so I can attend. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alder. Um, so we do have a, a motion and a second to approve item two. Item was pulled by Alder Brunette.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, not my district. Uh, as you can see, um, the council decision at the committee level was to hold with no recommendation. It was a two-two vote. And what I mentioned at the Parks Committee and Alder Weary, I believe, as well, it's not that I'm personally against public art. I think it's a very good and fine thing to do and I'm usually supportive. Uh, the question really was, with those TIF dollars, are there other improvements to the district that could be made? I noted the flooding, other infrastructure needs in that area, and Director Stachulte was emailing, uh, Alder MeWeary emailed the director, he responded back with a little more background information that I think that the council should be made aware of, so, if it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to ask Director, uh, the director to, uh, fill the council in on any other needs that those funds could go towards in the TIF.
Absolutely. Deck, Director Stachulte?
Certainly, thank you, Alder, thank you, Mayor. Um, so these are the funds we're looking at, uh, again, are directly affiliated with TIF District number five, uh, in the downtown area. Um, essentially in, in spring twenty-one, actually probably even back in February, actually right when I first started, um, had a conversation with the Finance Department regarding the expenditure period ending for TID five in twenty twenty-one. Uh, essentially that, that is the, the actual closure of the district is in December of twenty twenty-six. But we actually, there's usually a five-year limitation on, on a, on a typical TIF district where expenditures need to be committed as part of that project plan, and then those last five years are essentially set aside to generate revenue, usually to, to fund any committed improvements to that point. So those are two key dates to know regarding that. So, uh, at the time of closure, which would be the twenty twenty-six number, right now, I think our Finance Department is projecting TID five to have a balance of approximately five million dollars. Uh, and then to, some of these funds are collected, will be collected over the next five years. To be clear, it is not funds that the city currently has in its coffers. Uh, this is, but will be generated over the next five years in terms of collections. Um, what our staff has been spending a, a significant part of the last several months, uh, trying to identify eligible projects that will allow, you know, the city to access and use those projects, use funds towards qualified city projects. Essentially, um, you know, any fund balance that it, that remains in there, it's distributed at, at time of closure, gets distributed back to the other taxing jurisdictions. So there are essentially two categories of, uh, projects essentially that need to be met in order to be considered, quote-unquote, ineligible, uh, project essentially. Uh, one is it needs to be identified directly, uh, to a project within the approved project or adopted project plan that's been adopted both by the City Council and the Joint Review Board. Uh, projects that are not within essentially, uh, that project, you know, usually require a formal amendment process to go through the board. Uh, this also means the projects that, that must occur within the TIF district itself or within a half mile, if, if direct benefit can be shown to that key geographic area that is TID five. Uh, the other item that is key is that it has to essentially be formally committed. Funds need to be committed, is the proper term, I believe, uh, in order to, prior to the end of the expenditure period in order to be qualified. So essentially, it's kind of a project that is ready to go, so to speak, and can be identified through a formal plan process or otherwise. Um, certainly, the ideal situation is obviously projects that can be tied back to existing pla, projects that haven't identified within the project plan, have already been approved by the City Council, uh, originally, uh, it's a decision, but the key is actually the Joint Review Board is as the governing body over the TIF districts, so, um, you know, based on direction, we, we have assembled a preliminary review of potential projects, um, based on feasibility of moving forward this year and being consistent with that project plan. Uh, a considerable, a lot of those identified, has been identified as improvements to Light Park in the area, including that. One of the areas, uh, that was identified in conversation at staff level, including with Director Ditchite, was the incorporation of, of about forty-five thousand dollars, I believe, for sculpture and art projects as part of that park improvement. Um, one of the other areas that we are actually actively working with, with Director Grenier, his department is actively working on, uh, considerable improvements. Consider is there to actually make improvements to allow for cruise ships and other areas to actually be able to dock in that particular area. That was around two-point-two million dollars at last effort. Um, so this one, and then some of the other areas, other improvements to Light Park being considered, uh, included a, a new, a new shelter facility, uh, including some other, uh, improvements based on, uh, brick pathways, other improvements specifically to the park itself as part of that effort. Um, we have, don't have an absolute finalized yet, list yet. We have reviewed the Light Park improvements. There is a specific, specific category in the adopted project plan that refers to, um, essentially other public improvements related to Lights Dock Park immediately north of the Nishki Bridge, uh, in category, in a general category of park development, is essentially that eligible category that has been identified in the current project plan. Um, so what we're going through at this point, uh, Director Ditchite, and we wanted to make sure that these funds were eligible and, and committed, which I since obviously have identified that, particular, to that particular category in the project plan, but are currently evaluating, uh, several other projects to try to see if they may, in fact, meet both of those criteria that I previously discussed. With that, be happy to answer any questions folks may have.
Thanks, Director.
I, I thank you, Director. I, I do not have any questions. Uh, I think you covered it well. I, I personally believe that, um, we should hold on to those funds or allocate those funds for some of the larger scale projects, uh, infrastructure and things like that. Forty-five thousand's a rather large amount, so it's not that I'm against public art, it's just that giving all the other things to make improvements to that district and that business community, I'd much rather wait till the end of this cycle to consider allocating such a large amount to public art. So with that, I'm just gonna be a no vote on this at this point. Doesn't mean I don't support it at a future date, but I think I stayed in my position well. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments on the item or questions? Alder Dorf?
Um, thank you, Your Honor. So I know that when we do development projects now, we do require that, that art is attached to many of those projects that we're doing, and, um, I, I think, Mr., uh, Director Stachulte, did you say five million? What, what is our budget that the forty-five thousand is coming out of?
That is correct. At the end, at the end of twenty twenty-six, I believe our finance staff is projecting approximately a five million dollar, um, allocation of funds over the next five years. Um, the, the dollar figure we're currently looking at right now is, is forty-five thousand dollars, I believe, for the sculpture improvements.
Well, I would be definitely in favor of that, and I think we require it from the private sector, and, um, I think that it would definitely be advantageous to have that art in the park, and forty-five thousand is not a, a significant, huge significant amount compared to the five million, so I'll be in favor of, of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments or questions from council? Alder Johnson and then Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director Stachulte, the, uh, uh, the decision or the recommendation, I should say, to install the four art sculptures in Light Park, were there any other locations that were considered that would, would qualify within TID five? Or was it exclusively a commitment to try to make improvements at Light Park?
Yeah, Steph. Steph, commitment to Light Park improvements was the most logical connection in terms of what we looked at here. Um, I would have to go back and review the specific, um, language related to other areas. There are several areas where there are street improvements identified. Um, it's possibility, depending on the actual description of the actual different areas, Alder, that we could, we could maybe extrapolate that this could be part of the, the streetscape improvement of a particular street improvement and could be looked at in that sense.
Okay, and then is, is there any intent, um, to release perhaps a more comprehensive report of all of the things that we're looking to do with the excess funds there? Uh, as opposed to bringing these before us piecemeal? And, and I think if I'm not mistaken, this is the second item, the first item that we funded through these excess TID funds was the, the, the grants for the Parklets, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, Alder Johnson. Yes, that was the early, first earlier identity we had, and I say, I think Director Allenbecker is, is not, I think was the first one we did approve, yes.
Okay, so, so is there, is there a plan to bring, uh, or an intent to bring forward a comprehensive plan, or are we gonna continue, uh, to, to address these one-on-one?
Yes, certainly. I think in, in case of, in this case, Alder Johnson, certainly Steph was appearing, if it's consistent with the project plan, uh, as previously identified projects, council certainly has approved those. Uh, but I think for just in terms of sharing information, I think we're happy to put a, put a current list together of where we're at, focused on the Light Park improvements because of Director Ditchite's efforts and Director Grenier's efforts here recently, but we'll complete the review of some of those other projects. And we'll include a list of what, some of the things we looked at that we just didn't feel, that may have been eligible, but we didn't feel would be ready to go in a timely fashion to meet by the end of this year. We can, I can certainly provide that list.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would help this council make more informed decisions, you know, when we have all options in front of us. Um, I, I don't know, uh, to Alder Dorf's point, I mean, it's a relatively small percentage of the overall scope there, and it, it certainly is a qualifying expenditure. Um, you know, so I don't know that it would rise to the level of my opposition today, but again, I, I think it would help us as a, as a body, um, to make informed decisions when we have all of the information in front of us, particularly given some of the major infrastructure opportunities that we have in that area. Um, and then, of course, I think that there probably are some members of this body that might even have some recommendations that they would add to that list as well, so.
Thanks, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I concur with the previous two, uh, Alders in their comments, and would note that we did, uh, as a council pass a, a public arts fund, and it's my understanding that, that this isn't coming from that fund, this is kind of over and above, so, which is fine, but I, I think in the future it should come out of that, that fund that we're setting aside. Um, I appreciate, uh, Director Stachulte, your, your help in, in giving me the information that you did. I do believe we should have kind of more full accounting or understanding of what is going to be going on in that area, especially with the, uh, infrastructure needs, uh, so that we can make a, a more informed decision. And we had a, a, a small discussion about it, and I'll put in a request tonight, uh, as part of the, the rail yard project. Yep, tonight, Alder Scannell, I know it costs five bucks, no. No, it's okay. He's reminding me it costs money to put in a request tonight. Now I lost my train of thought. Uh, the, uh, when we passed the, the rail yard, we put in as a requirement, there'd be a spot set aside to commemorate the, you know, the Fort Howard location, that there'd be a historical area designation to be determined in the future, maybe some kind of interactive, something like, hey, you're, you're on the site of where this stood, and it was a big part of Green Bay. And, um, I know, Director, you probably haven't had a chance to look at that yet, so this is why I want to send it to, to RDA. We, we have no idea the scope of that or the cost of that, and I really don't want that to be at the tail end and say, well, now we're out of money. So we're gonna throw something together that's kind of, mm, not really what we want. So I'm gonna vote against this tonight because I really don't have a clear vision of, of all what's needed yet. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. We have a few others. Alder Steuer, then Alder Gerlock, then Alder Vanderleest.
I'm gonna piggyback on what Alder Weary said too, you know, there, that there was a promise of looking at the half acre or so of, uh, land near, in the rail yard district, talking about the history of this area. And I've talked to some of the private people over there too, and it sounds to me, there might be some confusion. They might be thinking that maybe some private entities need to come forward to help fund that. You know, I, I would like a description or some kind of a, something to describe, you know, where the funding would come from. If it's gonna be a combination of, you know, municipal and private, or just private. So that, that's basically where I'm coming from on that piece, so. Um, as far as the amount for this, forty-five thousand, I'm, I'm fine with it, but I, I, I concur with, uh, uh, Alder Johnson on this as well, that we need to, council needs to know a little more comprehensively what's out there for all of us, so that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, Director Stachulte, do you want to weigh in briefly on the Fort Howard marker concept?
Yeah, I just, uh, certainly it is something that is on our list to evaluate, Alder Weary. In fact, uh, Director Ditchite actually and I had a very brief email conversation, uh, regarding, uh, is there something, one of the things, the key, the larger expenditures that's being considered for Light Park is the upgraded shelter facility and restrooms and kind of thing. As a part of that structure, is there something we could do, uh, as a commemoration for Fort Howard as part of that, even on that side of things? Um, you know, certainly we do have exactly, the rail yard is certainly the original area where that was identified, and I think we still have a hope to, to look and identify that there. Um, but there is certainly an opportunity to take a look and, and, and offer that recognition as part of one of the other improvements. Certainly one of these, something we could, we'd be mindful of and one of, if we have a more comprehensive idea, and I don't know if Director Ditchite has some other specific design ideas in mind with that. Um, certainly something we, is, is certainly for, on, on our list of things to evaluate. And obviously, we want to make sure if it is a private sector, uh, obligation, we'd like to see them come through with that. Uh, but if there's our end to help encourage that investment and make that happen, uh, I think this is certainly the opportunity to take a look at that.
Great. Thanks, Director, Director, or, uh, Alder Gerlock, and then Alder Vanderleest, Alder Scannell.
Mind, uh, folks that are on the Parks Committee and those who didn't see the meeting, that, uh, our, I don't know her title, Laura Schley, what is her title?
Public Arts Coordinator?
The Arts Coordinator, did point out that there are, and I'm sorry, I don't know the word for this either, there are four things there in the park. Platforms, pedestals, something that were always intended for, um, sculptures, and so it's not like this is something new that wasn't planned for. I just wanted to mention that.
Right, great point. Alder Vanderleest?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, mine be for the director. Uh, if over the five-year period before the, the, the district actually terminates, uh, they're, they're planning on about five million dollars coming in, do they plan on spending the whole five million? On, on, in other words, as far, I understand if they're gonna build a shelter, if they're gonna fix the, the, the docks so they get, you know, get bigger boats, and I understand that they're gonna need some money to do it. And, and most of this money would come out of the TIF district, is that correct?
All of it.
All of it? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And on, on the, on the forty-five thousand dollars, is that for the next five-year period that we're talking, or are we talking just for the one-year period?
That would be, it'd just be a one-time cost, Alder. That would be one-time, to put those, install those, and it would be essentially the one-time committed funds.
When do they actually plan on moving forward with the, with the shelter and things like that? Is there a timeframe on that yet?
We'd like to move forward that, essentially what we'd like to do essentially by this fall is to have kind of a design. Essentially, what we'd like to do is essentially by this fall is to have kind of a design roughly committed on that. I think Director Ditchite has actually done some work in getting the estimates and forth based on other shelter facilities that we've we've constructed, altering that a little bit to the site and actually have that underway, really within the next, I don't know, Director, wouldn't you have a an idea of when construction might occur for that?
Well, our ideal would be to hire an architect in the very near future, and that would be done, that could be done in the next month or so. And construction would probably likely happen next year, either spring or summer, more likely summer.
And how many square foot are they looking at to build?
That is undetermined yet. We would work with whatever architect we hire to come up with a conceptual design of what that building would look like. The primary focus of the building would be restrooms, but there's, you know, potential to have a room attached to it, which could serve for several different functions.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that we were setting aside some acreage at the rail yard for this private sector project. It was to move the officers quarters from Maple to the site, and that fell through. And as far as I know, there is no other group or another project out there waiting to be done. So I don't know that to be hoping for a private sector, you know, step up. I don't think, you know, hold their breath a long time for that. So certainly, we as a city can look forward to do something, and I I appreciate the directors looking at that and coming up with something. And as far as the funds here, I certainly support this, and I'm certainly hoping that this is just the beginning, that we can certainly come up with more funds as we move along. Art is very important in the development of a city. It has been proven time and again that art creates a more vibrant atmosphere and increases business in the whole area, traffic in the area. So I certainly support this now and hope as we move along, we can fund our arts more and more. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer for a second time?
Thank you, Your Honor. On what Alder Scannell had said, 414 North Maple, I just wanted to, I had a chance to go through that building with the Historical Society folks, and it was built in the 1840s. They moved it after the railroad came through. They moved it in 1866. So it's historical in its original spot. It's historical now. They were gonna move it back and maybe make a guide, a guide center of some sort there. And they were talking about a Metis and Native American as well as French, British, the whole thing, all the the seven nations that existed on that spot. So the Daughters of the American Revolution have reached out to me. I gave a talk to their group some time back. They said they're very interested in maybe getting involved, and I think there might be some other private groups that would would really like to get involved with that. So I'll I'll be in touch with the directors and administration on that as well.
Great. Well, thanks for that background, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go back to talking about the agenda item. Just teasing, Alder Story. Alder Gerlach had raised the point, and I'm just looking to Director Ditchite to maybe confirm that, because because I guess I wasn't aware of this. Are those four platforms actually already installed in the park, or is that part of the funding request?
That is, to a certain extent, it's part of the funding request. So what's there now are four brick pads that are currently in place. Those brick pads are, do not serve as footings for the sculpture. So as part of the $45,000, actually, it's $46,500, as part of that, $5,000 of that is set aside for footing installation. And so the footings can be placed anywhere. They don't necessarily have to go where those pads are located, depending on the sculpture that is selected. If there's an alternate location in Light Park that's more suitable, we can look at an alternate location.
Okay. If there, and and I think this is probably more directed at Director Stixholti, we've identified that these sculptures, within this motion at least, need to be installed at Liked Park. Is that a necessity, or could they be installed anywhere within the qualifying TID five boundaries?
Right. Based on my preliminary read on, like I said, on on the project plan, Alder Johnson, is that we certainly are tying this to the public improvements related to Light Park. I could go back and take a look at, there are multiple projects that have been adopted and identified in there as street improvements, as areas for specific street improvements. So it would be going back and seeing whether or not there would be the possibility of, if if the description of the project is is general enough to include that it would be a reasonable, a reasonable human being could assume that that it would allow public art installation as part of that street improvement project. But at this point, it's certainly the 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 natural fit, at least at this point, did seem to appear to be Light Park, but I can go back and do evaluate if there are other alternatives, locations, if desirable.
Okay. And and the reason I bring that up is because I I think there are other places within TID five in particular that maybe have a little bit higher foot traffic that might have, where these things could perhaps have more impact than trying to congregate them all in one space. So from your perspective, if we just struck the item that said Liked Park and replaced it with, you know, within TID five, would that detrimentally harm the motion, or would that still allow staff enough flexibility to maybe make some decisions about some other locations that are still in alignment with TID five, but perhaps might give us an opportunity to consider some other other options?
I think if we, if that would allow us, and again, if we could devalue it specifically to the locations to be consistent with what's currently in the adopted project plan, then I would say being able to place them within TID five would be an acceptable.
Okay.
Motion. And it that still may result in, and as I said, if our evaluation says we don't really have one that feels that that's a logical or a fair connection to be made in terms of locations, then all four still may end up resulting at Light Park.
Yep. And that that was kind of my my intent. So.
Perfect.
With that in mind, I would offer up an amendment to strike in Light Park and replace it with within TID five.
Motion has been made by Alder Johnson, or an amendment has been offered by Alder Johnson. It was seconded by Alder Scannell, and that is to strike Liked Park from the Liked Memorial Park from the item and insert in TID five. Any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The amendment has been adopted. Alder Dorf makes a motion to approve that item as amended, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
No.
And the ayes have it. That item has been adopted as amended. Onto the personnel committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Receiving place on file.
Motion received in place on file.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to receive and place on file the municipal court report for August 2021. That was seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Your Honor?
The ayes have it.
I've been kicked out of Zoom. Again, I need the meeting ID and the password.
Very good. We are almost at our.
Do I need to bother? No. Okay. Thank you.
Onto resolutions.
Motion to suspend.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote. That was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. There's been a motion made to adopt those items with one roll call vote by Alder Scannell, and that was seconded by Alder Steyer. Do we need to do a roll call here, clerk?
Yes, I would need to call the roll.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Alder Dorf?
Yes.
Alder Galvin?
Yes.
Alder Johnson?
Yes.
Alder Weary?
Yes.
Alder Stevens?
Yes.
Alder Stevens votes yes?
Thank you. Alder Brunet?
Yes.
Alder Vanderleest?
Yes.
Alder Steyer?
Yes.
Alder Scannell?
Aye.
Thank you, Alder Scannell. Alder Corpus Dax?
Yes.
Aldo Lefave?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all right. Thank you. Alder Gerlach?
Yes.
Alder Gerlach votes yes.
Thank you. That passes 12-0.
Thank you, clerk. Onto ordinances, first reading. Motion to advance that item made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. That item has been advanced to a second reading. Petitions and communications. Alder Brunet?
My apologies to Alder Scannell. This is a bit of a cost, but I did attempt to fill out the form, but we were offline, so I'm gonna do it this way. I'm gonna need help from the city attorney, though, to direct this to the right committee for discussion with possible action on creating an ordinance to allow golf cart-style vehicles on city roadways. If you recall, we had discussed this about a year, year and a half ago, and the constituent who requested it pulled back due to COVID, so we want to move it to the committee level again. So Attorney Chavez, could you tell me where to send this?
Protection of policy.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. Second one would be improvement in services to create a sound barrier or berm to buffer residential properties on parts of West Mason, west of Country Club to the city limits on the north side of the road. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? Entertainer motion?
Motion to refer.
Second. Motion has been made to refer these this, these communications to the proper authority. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Brunet. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Adjournment. Motion to adjourn made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Steyer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.